I'd like to welcome you all tonight to this special gathering in which Mr. Martin Heberling will be sworn in to his seat as Council-at-Large. And this is to replace Mr. Joe Miller, who's also here tonight, who is now has been elected to represent our area in the State House District. Swearing in Mr. Heberling tonight will be Judge Tom Januzzi. And I would ask Mr. Januzzi and Mr. Heberling to come to the microphone, please.
So it's my great honor and privilege to be here today for a number of different reasons. First of all, in living in the city of Amherst, it's always a pleasure and an honor to come before a council and be participating in proceedings. I really enjoy swearing in counsel in the regular election cycle, but here we have a special proceeding. And it's, once again, I think it's very appropriate that Martin Heberling III has asked me to swear him in this evening. I can tell you that in the year 2002, I began my term, terms at the Oberlin Municipal Court. And at that time, Solomon's sitting right here in the front row, he's kind enough to swear me in. I'd like to introduce him, honor him this evening, I think we should. He was your judge of the Oberlin Municipal Court from the year 1975 until 2001, 26 years. And here he is, the grandfather of this young man who's being sworn in tonight as a council of large, new council of large member of the city of Amherst. This is Martin Heberling. You wanted to stand up? I think we should. Without a good and kind and beautiful wife. And here he has. We also are very fortunate to have with him this evening his good wife, Pat. And I think you should take a bow. People who have dedicated many years of public service who are here to witness this.
Can I interject for just a second, too? And add one thing. And Mr. Heberling, just for your knowledge, also was our law director for the city of Amherst with Mayor Davis. And he was our city prosecutor for a number of years. So he spent eight years actually serving the city of Amherst, I believe. So I wanted to honor that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so then, at this time, we are going to submit Mr. this oath. And if you'll raise your right hand. Pite out your name. I, state your name.
I, Martin Heberling III.
Do solemnly swear.
Dusally only swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
The duties of my position.
The duties of my position.
As council-at-large.
As council-at-large.
For the city of Amherst.
For the city of Amherst.
And its inhabitants.
And its inhabitants.
For the period commencing January 14, 2019.
For the period commencing January 14.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, for 2019.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Selkirk, members of council. And here's your newest member of council, Martin Heberling, Martin Heberling III. Thanks. You're welcome.
Martin, would you like to get a grab on there? No grab on there?
Yeah.
All right. Here we go. We're gonna hit you right here. Looking down. That's great. Congratulations, you guys.
How about when you play them on? Did she get in? Would you like to get a picture, too?
Yep.
No.
Let's get one down here. Stay right here.
Okay.
Stay right here. All standing, huh? Right, standing. Faces in photo picture. I just want to go around.
Not too bad, right? Yourself? Sure you are.
Oh, that's true. There's always something.
I was gonna be.
Got your next vacation planned?
Yeah. Actually, yeah, we're in the middle of it. We're doing Yellowstone.
Right there, right there.
Yeah. That'd be fun.
Awesome.
How are your allergies?
They're okay.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know, but like, it's, it's, it's still cold. Like, in some spots, it's still snowing. So it might not be too bad. If not, we'll just take it. Uh-oh. Uh-oh. That's a bad omen. I think after that, we're gonna start talking about scaling it back a little bit.
Your pens might be a little expensive.
Yeah. Yeah, we used to have. Got down there.
They're, we were going through, and hotels are limited out there. Hang on.
Are you kidding?
It happens every time I do it.
Well, that's fine. I'm still gonna post.
He kinda looked at me, goes, "Well, I'm gonna hold off." I'm like, "Okay."
See you later. I don't know. My God. Oh, sure.
Can't please everybody, right? Yeah.
Are you kidding?
It happens every time I do it.
Well, that's fine. I'm still gonna post.
He kinda looked at me, goes, "Well, I'm gonna hold off." I'm like, "Okay."
See you later. I don't know. My God. Oh, sure.
Can't please everybody, right?
Yeah.
We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Amherst City Council on January 14, 2019, at 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cowger. Mr. Winarski.
Here.
Mr. Mayhorn.
Go ahead.
Mr. Heberling.
Here.
Mr. Janick.
Here.
Mr. Van Truen.
Here.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Here.
We have letters on file from Mr. Cowger and Mr. Ramsey. Mr. Van Truen.
Move to excuse Mr. Cowger and Mr. Ramsey.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Second.
Is a motion and a second to excuse Mr. Cowger and Mr. Ramsey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion is carried six to zero. Consent agenda is accepted. Now, will you please join me in standing with a prayer led by Chaplain Mayhorn and a pledge to the flag by Sergeant-at-Arms Dimbinski?
Please join me in bowing your heads. Gracious God, please continue to bless those in our community in this new year. Thank you for those who serve in our police, fire, and safety forces, and we ask that you always keep them safe. Thank you for those who have chosen to serve in our community and public office. Please continue to guide us and lead us always, and always let us remember and honor the past while we prepare for Amherst's strong future. And now let the words of our mouths and meditations of our hearts be acceptable in your vision. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go to item four on the agenda, the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
Minutes of the regular council meeting held December 10, 2018. Minutes of the special council meeting held December 17, 2018. Minutes of the streets committee meeting held January 7, 2019. Minutes of the police and fire committee meeting held January 7, 2019. Minutes of the organs committee meeting held January 7, 2019. Minutes of the community development committee meeting held January 7, 2019.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Move to accept the consent agenda as read.
Mr. Winarski.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion is carried six to zero. Consent agenda is accepted. We will go to item five now on the agenda. Acknowledgement of the public pertaining to items on the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak tonight on any item pertaining to the agenda? Seeing no one wishing to speak, we will go to item six. Ordinances and resolution first reading. Madam Clerk?
Item A, an ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Amherst codified ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Move to suspend council rules that item six A may be passed on the first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Winarski.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to suspend the rule that requires three readings so that item six A can be passed on the first reading. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Heberling.
Yes.
Mr. Janick.
Yes.
Mr. Van Truen.
Yes.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. That rule is suspended. Mr. Dimbinski.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Winarski.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt item six A. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Heberling.
Yes.
Mr. Janick.
Yes.
Mr. Van Truen.
Yes.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. That rule is suspended. Mr. Dimbinski.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Winarski.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt item six A. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Heberling.
Yes.
Mr. Janick.
Yes.
Mr. Van Truen.
Yes.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
It will be resolution R1901.
Go to item six C.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperation agreement by and between Lorraine County, the city of Lorraine, and the city of Amherst for the Cooper Foster Park Road reconstruction project between State Route 58 and Oberlin Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Move to suspend council rules that item six C may be passed on the first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Winarski.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second to suspend the rule that requires three readings so that this item can be passed on the first reading. Comments or questions, please? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Heberling.
Yes.
Mr. Janick.
Yes.
Mr. Van Truen.
Yes.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Mr. Winarski.
Motion to adopt.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt item six C. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Heberling.
Yes.
Mr. Janick.
Yes.
Mr. Van Truen.
Yes.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. That rule is suspended. Mr. Dimbinski.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Winarski.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt item six A. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Heberling.
Yes.
Mr. Janick.
Yes.
Mr. Van Truen.
Yes.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. That rule is suspended. Mr. Dimbinski.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Winarski.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt item six A. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Heberling.
Yes.
Mr. Janick.
Yes.
Mr. Van Truen.
Yes.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. It will be ordinance O1901. Go to item six B on the agenda.
A resolution declaring the necessity for public sidewalk repair and replacement and authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director to award a contract for such repair and replacement of public sidewalks to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder at a cost, at a cost to the city not to exceed $300,000 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Winarski.
A motion to suspend council rules, so this can be passed on the first reading, please.
Thank you. Mr. Janick.
Second, please.
There's a motion and a second to suspend the rule requiring three readings so that this item can be passed on the first reading. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Heberling.
Yes.
Mr. Janick.
Yes.
Mr. Van Truen.
Yes.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
It will be resolution R1901.
Go to item six C.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperation agreement by and between Lorain County, the city of Lorain, and the city of Amherst for the Cooper Foster Park Road reconstruction project between State Route 58 and Oberlin Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Move to suspend council rules that item six C may be passed on the first reading. Thank you.
Mr. Winarski.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second to suspend the rule that requires three readings so that this item can be passed on the first reading. Comments or questions, please? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Heberling.
Yes.
Mr. Janick.
Yes.
Mr. Van Truen.
Yes.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Mr. Winarski.
Motion to adopt.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt item six C. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Heberling.
Yes.
Mr. Janick.
Yes.
Mr. Van Truen.
Yes.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. That rule is suspended. Mr. Dimbinski.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Winarski.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt item six A. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Heberling.
Yes.
Mr. Janick.
Yes.
Mr. Van Truen.
Yes.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. That rule is suspended. Mr. Dimbinski.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Winarski.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt item six A. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Heberling.
Yes.
Mr. Janick.
Yes.
Mr. Van Truen.
Yes.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. That rule is suspended. Mr. Winarski.
Motion to adopt.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Heberling.
Yes.
Mr. Janick.
Yes.
Mr. Van Truen.
Yes.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. That rule is adopted.
It will be ordinance O1903.
Thank you. We'll go on to item seven. Ordinances and resolutions, second reading. There are none. Go to item eight. Ordinances and resolutions, third reading. There are none. Item nine. Miscellaneous and acknowledgement of the public. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on any subject? I would like to call your attention to a document that has been passed out to each of you. This is the Amherst City Council Committee Chairs and Vice Chairs for the 29th, beginning today through the end of this year. And I'm going to read this off. To Finance Committee, Mr. Ed Cowger. The vice chair is Brian Dimbinski. Building and Lands Committee, the chair is Mr. Winarski. The vice chair is Mr. Van Truen. The Streets Committee, the chair is Mr. Van Truen. The vice chair is Mr. Janick. Community Development, the chair is Mr. Mayhorn. The vice chair is Mr. Dimbinski. The Executive Committee, Mr. Van Truen. The vice chair is Mr. Janick. The Ordinance Committee, the chair is Mr. Dimbinski. The vice chair is Mr. Janick. Utilities Committee, the chair is Mr. Janick. The vice chair is Mr. Van Truen. The Recycle Committee, the chair is Mr. Mayhorn. The vice chair is Mr. Heberling. And welcome, Mr. Heberling. The Technology Committee, the chair is Mr. Dimbinski. The vice chair is Mr. Winarski. The Police and Fire Committee, the chair is Mr. Winarski. The vice chair is Mr. Mayhorn. The Annexation Committee, the chair is Mr. Van Truen. The vice chair is Mr. Winarski. Continuing as chaplain is Mr. Mayhorn. And continuing as sergeant-at-arms is Mr. Dimbinski. And that completes the list of council committee chairs and vice chairs and appointments. We will go now to item 10. Agenda requests and committee meeting schedules. Madam Clerk?
To ordinance A1905, an ordinance to approve updated standing rules of council. To Streets, A1906, an ordinance consenting the state of Ohio Department of Transportation to perform mandatory guard rail upgrades on State Route 58 in the city of Amherst. That's all I have for this evening, madam. Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. Finance Committee, Vice Chairman Dimbinski.
No items at this time, Madam President. Please cancel.
Thank you. Executive, Mr. Van Truen.
No items. Please cancel.
Thank you. Ordinance, Mr. Dimbinski.
Yes, Madam President. I have one item, A1905, an ordinance to approve updated standing rules of council. I'd like to call that for Monday, February 4, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dimbinski. Is that complete?
Yes, that's all.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Janick.
No items, Madam President. Please cancel.
Thank you. Recycle, Mr. Mayhorn.
Please keep recycling.
Thank you. Technology, Brian Dimbinski.
No items at this time, Madam President. Please cancel.
Police and Fire, Mr. Winarski.
Nothing at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Annexation, Mr. Van Truen.
No items. Please cancel, Madam President.
Okay, that completes the Amherst Council Committees. We will go on to item 11. Reports of the administration. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Pitek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've submitted December financial reports for the year end. You all noticed the general fund did carry over in excess of our informal policy to carry over $1 million and maintain that. So we carried over a surplus of about $220,000 this year, so ending the year about $1.2 million, which is great news, fiscally responsible. And that is the end of our report.
Thank you. Mr. Pecora.
Just want to welcome Judge Heberling, and just like Judge Januzzi indicated, from my first experiences as a young attorney, my landlord and my mentor, then attorney Frank Chanick, now Judge Frank Chanick, took me to see Judge Heberling for my first pre-trial. So it's an honor to see the judge here today. Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Jeffries.
No reform, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I just kind of want to reflect, Mr. Pecora, it's quite an honor to have the judge and Mrs. Heberling here today. I mean, quite a bit of service goes back to Mayor Davis, so I really want to thank you from current administration to the past for all you did back then. It was really nice today to share some of those stories. I really would look forward to hearing some more of them sometime soon when you're available. And I would like to welcome Mr. Heberling, our city councilman. So good luck with the new position. Again, I hope you come in and talk in the office and hear some of your ideas, and I'd like to share where we're heading and this kind of stuff that we expect to do for the year to catch you up. So welcome aboard. Tomorrow, we have our rating presentation to Moody's, Mr. Pitek and I, so we really hope to improve on our bond rating. I hope to at least keep it where it's at, but we've really come a long way with the city. We're moving forward, and there's a lot of good stats, and I think it's a really good,